Well, thank you community for coming. Tonight is a board work session and someone said, "Well, how have you done past work sessions?" I said, "No, I'm really just up for a work session." So we haven't had a specific protocol before, so this is an enjoyable moment that we've got so many of you. At the last board meeting, the board heard the task force recommendation on our building and it was a, you know, a very huge overview on everything. So as a result, we decided to have a work session so the board could hear more specific information on exactly what's being done, the dollar cost to that. So that's why Preston from Ari Morton is here and Steve from GLT Architects so that they could go through some more of those specifics. So kind of what the process will be and in front of you, you've got some information that has that detail. We're going to get into those specifics when we finish. If anybody has a question you feel wasn't answered at that point, that's when Chair Waikiki will take questions from the audience for a bit to see if there's another item that wasn't covered completely. Now, at the board meeting, it was kind of the general, how did we get to this point? How did the task force arrive at this point in time? So we didn't know for sure if that was of interest. Preston's agreed to kind of go through that whole journey again. I said, "Well, I'd ask the board heard it," but I would ask the audience, if we had an audience, if that is something they wanted to hear. So would you like to hear that process piece again? He would gladly step through that. Before we, yes, that's yeses. So yes, so we just gave you, I gave you a little heads up, so this is a total surprise right now. So get well through how we arrived at this decision and then we'll get into the details and then we finish, the board will be asking questions and again, if some of yours aren't asked or answered, you may ask them and Chair Waikiki will recognize you at the end. Okay? Thank you. Preston.
My name is Preston Norris. My company is Ari Morton. We are facilities planning company and construction management company. So we were the ones that you selected to facilitate this finding process and so we would like to start by overviewing the process also. Along with us tonight is Steve Posh from GLT Architects. He is a principal in his firm and we worked together on this as well as gathering input from some engineering firms. So the task force itself was assembled and we had a real good turnout with the task force members, different communities supporting each of the groups. And so as we went through the process, whoops if I turn it on, I suppose. The process itself, you know, I'll kind of go through this maybe a little quicker than last time because you've heard it once already, but I think for enough for everybody else to hear. We started with the facilities assessments. We walked through each of the three buildings, did our assessment that was from an architectural standpoint, was from an engineering standpoint, and then included our observations on things and costs along the way. From that, we then held listening sessions with the staff and also community members so they had a chance to tell us what their thoughts were, what were important. We'll get into that a little bit more in a second. We did hold five community task force meetings so that group of about 30 people met on five different occasions and we talked about the assessment, we talked about educational programming, we talked about options then that would satisfy the needs that we established out of those. We did establish the project criteria and objectives and again, we've got more detail on that. And then basically formulated a recommendation that we brought to you at the last board meeting from that task force. There were 15 options developed. We did narrow it down to the one option which is labeled C.2.4. Along with that, the established budget, schedule, and tax impact. The screen doesn't quite show the tax impact on the bottom there, but those were all of the things that were represented in the recommendation made from you last time. As we started to prioritize the objectives, we looked at it from a community standpoint. What were the most important things? What does the community mean to the school district? What does the school district mean to the community? And these were the top five items that came out of that where it was very important to keep a building in each of the communities and that the community uses those buildings outside of the educational for the kids. There are other events and other activities that the community uses, provides local businesses with employment. They all have a great deal of pride and that important to keep community. We'd like to see other things offered such as daycare. So those were the top things that came out from a community standpoint as we went through the objectives. From the educational side, there were six items that really bubbled to the forefront here that GFW schools teach students life skills as well as all of the different educational programs, but including vocational training and post-secondary opportunities for students are important. The smaller class sizes are a plus. GFW has quality teachers, it's important to retain them. STEM or science, technology, engineering, and mathematics is also a key and elective courses would be beneficial to the district. More community education programs should be offered and to continue the emphasis on technology in general, personal devices and technology, things that have come to the forefront. On the physical side, safety and security was very important. More gym space was highlighted as needed. The elementary school specifically was highlighted as a building that needed more space for its current programming. Energy efficiency, whoops, I skipped. Middle school auditorium needs updates and improvements as well as some of the general maintenance items like tuck pointing. Energy efficiency and air quality important. It's also important to have a certain level of exterior curb appeal to the buildings that is a more welcoming environment to the public. And then the other things like ADA compliance and general wayfinding of students and community is important. So having gone through all of those priorities, we kept those as the baseline for our study and always focused back to those as being the important things. And then from that level, we started to develop different options to how to satisfy the needs that were identified. And there were three big picture general concepts that came out of this. And again, based upon the objectives established, we wanted to broaden that somewhat to make sure we were looking at all of the angles. But the first general theme was the A options, which is what if the district were to go to a one school model? And underneath that, there were some sub-concepts. One is a brand new school on new property somewhere and the other option was to build a PK-12 building on an existing site. Now, in this case, the only location you would have for a one-site model on existing property would be at the Fairfax School. There isn't enough property in Given, there's not enough property in Winthrop to do that. But that was one of the big items or big concepts. The second big concept was if the district were to go to a two-school model. And some of the highlights that came out of that was on the educational programming side, there was a real strong emphasis on efficiencies for a PK through sixth grade model and then a seven through 12 model. That's different than the models that you have today in the three buildings, but that was kind of the focus on this two-school model. So looking at, you know, existing sites, looking at new sites, and then combinations of maybe additions and renovations to your different buildings. We even looked at what if you built a new PK six building at one site and converted one to a 712 or a new 712 building and converting one of the existing. So we looked at the four major options there under that two-school model. The third big concept was if the district were to keep all three schools or a school in each community. And the different subsets there that were highlighted was keeping the existing grade configurations at the existing buildings, to modify the grade configurations at existing buildings, change locations of existing grade configurations and buildings, i.e. the high school at Fairfax, the middle school at Winthrop. We also then looked at the options of new buildings at one or two or three of the different locations. But again, the focus there was a school building in each of the communities. Through all of those different 15 options, the task force narrowed it down to four of these and those are the ones underlined. So a new PK-12 building on a new site, modifying the grade configurations, changing locations of existing configurations or to build new facilities at one or two or three of those different locations. One thing I'll quickly mention under the grade configuration point was that if we were to keep a building in each community, it was ideal and efficient to do a PK through two model, a three through six model, and then a seven through 12 model. Efficiencies from a building standpoint, but also from the staff licensing standpoint and other things that were beneficial and we can certainly have Superintendent Martin speak more to that. But those were the big concepts and what we narrowed down to. Whoops. Little bit here, this were the people that attended the meetings and the meetings they attended and this is the official approval to the, or recommendation to the board that we brought forth at the last board meeting and we'll be discussing tonight. But the key components of that is to utilize the option C.2.4, established at an estimated cost of $46 million plus any land costs that might be associated with that. And then the third recommendation was to look at a November timing for the election. We talked about some of those components too and I can certainly answer any questions you might have on that. But that was really the task force recommendation. The recommendations brought to you, it's ultimately your decision on that information. We went through, these are, I won't spend a lot of time on these again as detailed, but we do want to talk more about how the costs are associated with this. But this is basically the list of the needs of each of the buildings and we separated those into baseline needs or primary needs and then also some secondary needs, the things that, you know, we talked about that could be, you know, things that we look at, you know, maybe down the road. But these are the key things that we built then as the model for each of the options and specifically to the C.2.4 model that we're bringing as a recommendation. So at the elementary school, there was a whole list of those needs. And I'm kind of getting into Steve's avenue here, so if he doesn't mind, we'll just overview it, but.
Yeah, that's fine.
We looked at what the site plan would look like and in this case, this is the Given site plan that does not show any additions to this building. It's primarily maintenance work and renovations to that. As we went to the new model, grade configuration of PK through 12, there is space in that school to handle that program. It took the emphasis off of the need to add on to that building to satisfy the current programming. And so there's no additions to this building because of the different grade configuration so that work primarily is on the remodel side. This shows existing floor plans, the different colors represent the different ages of the The new site plan, again, we're not adding any space here, but we are doing some things with the site with paving a parking lot, improving some drainage issues over here and helping with some playground issues and another parking lot here as parking is kind of a premium here at this location. It's mostly street parking or gravel parking. And then Steve and his staff did a wonderful job of looking at how the grade configurations would work and each of the components that fit into that, where the kindergarten classrooms would be and where the early childhood classrooms would be and then the first and second grades. And again, we can go into a lot more detail, I'm just trying to give a real quick overview if that's okay. And then which areas would be remodeled in that space. And so as we look at the other handout that was given to you today, it shows the cost detail of the budget of this option and it shows what areas are being remodeled and the costs that were assigned to those different components. Again, these are the floor plans that show renovations, but there's also some maintenance things that go into that, ADA compliance in restrooms and such. Went through the same process at the middle school where we looked at all of the primary needs and then developed a plan to satisfy those. Existing site plan, again, that shows where things are today, the existing floor plan that shows the different areas and ages of the building. The new site plan, which in this case, again, we feel there's ample space to handle a three through six programming at Fairfax. So it would be renovations, maintenance, and site issues that become the bigger parts of this. And real quickly, you'll see that there's a new paved parking lot at the north end of the building, a dedicated parent drop area, reconfigured main entry to the building, a new parking lot for, and bus drive, this would be where the kids would be dropped off the bus. So it separates the bus drive from the parent drop-off, a nice feature when it comes to safety without crossing buses and kids. And then a staff parking area. The new floor plan to accommodate that great, new grade configuration and the remodeled areas, again, that show. Now, in this case, there, you'll see in the budget detail that we still have allocated some dollars to renovating the auditorium. That was one of the main priorities that we talked about, but it is one of those things too. I think we can further discuss to say, how far do we take that renovation of the auditorium as it's now more of a three through six and not your middle school or high school performance area? But it'll show the balance of the areas that were renovated for the grade configurations and also for the maintenance improvements. Same process at the high school, identified the primary needs. From the standpoint of your high school, this is probably the building that is your biggest challenge, especially if we are to do a seven through 12 grade configuration. But the existing floor plan and site plan has its limitations from flow of students and sequencing to things like parking, you know, bus drop-off, parent drop-off. So we looked at from a site standpoint, all the things we would need to do to improve upon those situations as well as eventually coming up with a plan, a proposed plan for the educational programming for that 712 model. So the existing floor plan, there's a lower level, a main level, and an upper level of the buildings. This was the proposed site plan that the task force reviewed and is recommending coming into this. So again, it's a 712 grade configuration. The improvements to this point are in addition to some of the renovated areas or how we looked at this, there are two parts of the building that we felt could be reutilized in this floor plan. It is the gymnasium, locker room, and wrestling room areas, that's right about in this area. And then the two-story classroom, which is over on the west side of the building, that we felt were adequate spaces to repurpose in this plan. But the best, the rest of it basically becomes a much more efficient flow and correct flow of programming for that 712 model. It also improves upon a bus drop-off area and a student drop-off area with parking at the beginning. Just a little bit more detail on what that looks like component-wise and we can certainly come back to this with more of the detail, but covering all of your classroom needs. It moves your administrative office to the front of the building where it can be more safe and secure and welcoming to the community. Your larger gathering spaces, auditorium, reusing the existing gymnasium and then a new competition gymnasium for both the middle school and the high school levels. We did identify a two-station or option for a three-station gym more over that concept and again, all of the different music and shops and classrooms along the way. And then that second floor classroom being renovated. And then there was a phasing plan that we talked about last time of how we would accommodate the actual construction of this plan. And so we would be building the new areas before we would come back and look at the phase two, which is addressing this existing area. There is this wing of the classroom right now that, there's a dash line here, it's kind of hard to see on the screen, but that would have to be part of the phase one demo package in order to accommodate this new construction. And then phase two would come back then and demo the older parts of the building and then add this connecting last classroom piece in the middle and then the renovation pieces. We looked at the schedule from the standpoint of a planning process to the November election, to the different bid phases of the project, when the different projects would be under construction. So, you know, the given construction during a summer period, Fairfax would be, in this planning option, it looked at phasing construction over two different summers of work. It would be more efficient to combine that into one construction time period, but in this model, we're looking at it that way. And then the third is that the Winthrop building, which is a combination of one demo would happen, when construction would happen, and when some remodels and site work would take place, phasing ones and two. And so you look at this process from a November election to a start of construction in the spring of 2018 to completion of the Fairfax and Given schools for back-to-school 2018 and then the Winthrop project being done.
Nineteen.
Oh nineteen. Winthrop area being done either the end of 2019 or early into 2020. So those are some of the components that a phased construction, working with existing buildings, that timeline as it takes for that construction. We also then at the last meeting, overviewed some of the tax impacts for that plan and program. I think we can come back to this too if you've got more questions and the different components of what some of the legislative programs might be, specifically the ag to school credit for farmland that is being proposed. The legislature has, what, a week to finish their work, but whether that happens or a special session. The good news is that the ag to school tax credit is in the governors, the House, and the Senate. They all agree, it's a program they want to support, but it's all the other stuff that ties along with the bonding bill that kind of get muddied along the way. But that would be proposed 40% tax credit to non-homestead ag land. What that meant for taxes, this graphic just basically shows that the new tax project would be consistent over a 20-year period and what that means for your tax. Then lastly, this was the graphic that showed how GFW schools would compare if the project were to pass in referendum, how it would compare to some of the neighboring districts. There are some projects that are being proposed in some of these other districts, but at least for a payable 2016, this is the tax that is being collected at the other districts compared to the group average or the state average at the part right. So that was the quick overview. Any questions to this point? Okay. What I brought for you tonight was also more of the detail, I should say, Steve, was there anything else?
One new thing is the booklet that's sitting in front of you. That's a copy of the facility assessment report that we did and so we brought copies for the board members and the leadership team. But that includes the size, grade configuration, capacities, enrollment numbers, it's got construction history, and then it's got the architectural, mechanically, electrical surveys and noting deficiencies and, you know, what's working well and what's not working well. And then there are site plans and floor plans incorporated at the end of the report. So that's something new for tonight.
The other intent for me tonight was to give you more of a glimpse of the detail of the projects from a budget standpoint. You know, we've gone through the graphics, we've gone through the components, we've gone through the needs or priorities, but I felt it would be good from an overall understanding, but also from a very transparent process to know what the costs are associated with each of those line items. And so the worksheet that you have in front of you is the recommendation from the task force of the items that were addressed in those budgets. It is, there's a cover page that shows the overview of each of the buildings. And then there also is the follow-up sheets which are the detail. From the cover standpoint, we looked at it, that first column, the planning concept estimate shows the total cost. We also had Ellers looking at potential for the alternative sources of funding for the project. And so the column that's labeled LTFM is long-term facilities maintenance. That's a newer program that the state has for school districts to fund some of their maintenance items in a way that could be used to cover maintenance items with or without a vote. And in this case, we've decided to build it into the project so that everybody, again in transparency, knows that it's included in there, but it's a different financing or funding source that does help in a bond amount reduction, but there's also some, you know, benefits from the state from contribution to that point. It's still tax money, it's still project money, but it's a different funding source. And I'm sure Tammy's maybe covered some of that with you already or in another meeting or you gathered that from Ellers, but we certainly can try to cover some of those. And then the second column is what then would be truly spent on a bond amount. Now, I'll mention that in your district, you actually have a lot more needs under the long-term facilities maintenance than what I show on my report, but there is a formula that's per pupil that allows you to gather that money. And if you modify your funding within that per pupil unit amount, then it is, you get the best benefit out of the state matching kind of funds that go with that. If you go above that, you certainly can do that, but then it's just tax increase like it would be under a bond amount. And we still want to leave the district with some long-term facilities maintenance funding to handle things that are coming up in the next five, 10 or so years, part of that 10-year plan. Did I say that okay, Tammy? Okay. And so that's why that two plus million is the number that we used in that because that is a comfortable amount without over-expending. So if you turn to the detail on this page, you'll notice that at the top, your first page should say Given on the top. And so that is the components that were comprised for this facility here at Given. And if you remember back in the presentation, we talked about the primary needs and then the reprogramming of the grade configuration. So this budget then accommodates or projects that out. And it's a lot of information on here and so what I'm going to try to do is kind of overview it for you and then we can certainly dig into any detailed questions as you have. But we look at it from the different components that are out there from an ADA standpoint, a building code standpoint, also mechanical, electrical, those maintenance items that we talked about, renovations, new spaces, and then site development. So those are the major categories that are highlighted in the graphic under the gray. So under the ADA, there are two sets of bathrooms that in this building- overview it for you, and then we can certainly dig into any detailed questions as you have. But we look at it from the different components that are out there, from an ADA standpoint, a building code standpoint, also mechanical, electrical, those maintenance items that we talked about, renovations, new spaces, and then site development. So those are the major categories that are highlighted in the graphic under the gray. So under the ADA, there are two sets of bathrooms that, in this building currently today, that don't meet ADA standards. If you don't do anything with the building, you likely would not be required to do that unless there were to be somebody who came with a claim to the district. So if you had a handicapped student that just could not get to the bathrooms appropriately, you know, there could be a claim in the district to do that. But I'm not saying today that it's mandated by the state, but in a renovation, it might be highly recommended, and it might end up being a requirement under a plan review.
Right.
But it isn't something that I'm saying you have to do today, that, you know, you're going to come in and be mandated tomorrow to do that, whether this referendum passes or not. But in the facility assessment, we wanted to identify all of the things that you're deficient in, so that it gives you that list. So there are two sets of bathrooms that don't meet that today. There is an instance in one of those sets that they're close enough to another set of bathrooms that are ADA compliant, that a student could wayfair from their classroom to another set of bathrooms to meet that ADA requirement. So that's why I've listed them under two separate scenarios, because that could be a conversation item. Under the building code or security categories, there are three items there. We wanted to have better control of the ECFE wing under a security standpoint. We also wanted a better security of people that might be into this gym, because what happens now is once they're in the main doors, they have access to your ECFE room, they have access to the gymnasium, and there will be security improvements so that in the final design, some of those uses change a little bit. But still, anybody that's here in this gymnasium, once they're in the main door, they could get in and out of the gym without that security. And then there's just a code issue that there's a grease trap in the kitchen that needs to be modified. Under the mechanical, electrical, we were looking at converting some of your systems and controls. Some of the items that also came up out of the assessment was the mop sinks in the custodial rooms. Right now, they're not accessible to some of the equipment that staff has, so we tried to address that. Egress lighting, exterior lighting, electrical outlets in classrooms, and then upgrading the PA system. So these are all things that fall under mechanical, electrical, because those are the trades that would cover that. So, I guess before I get too far, the way that we've broken this down is that our budgets include, it's an all-inclusive budget, so it includes the hard costs of the project, so it's basically the unit cost of each of these line items. But it also includes all of the associated contingencies, permits, fees, and we also have some new furniture fixtures, equipment built into this budget too. So as this rolls up to a bond amount, it includes everything that you would need for this construction. It's not assuming that the district is going to contribute any of the operational funds for anything in this project, it's all-inclusive. And so that's, as you read from left to right, those budgets across, that's, it adds those incremental pieces along the way, so that if you want, if you ask me, well, what is the cost of that grease trap in the kitchen, you know what it is, including all of the contingencies and fees and permits along the way. Does that make sense? Under the renovations, if you recall back in the graphics, we had colored areas that were being renovated, and so we've assigned a budget to those renovation areas that we typically call it either light remodel, medium remodel, or heavy remodel. Light remodel is more of painting and flooring and ceilings and those kinds of things, where the heavy remodel is where you're basically scraping the interior and rebuilding. And so in this case, we are utilizing a lot of what you have with walls and exterior items, and it's more about reconfiguring those in a medium remodel to accommodate the new class configurations. So in case you're wondering how that looks, or that is allocated. So in this case, we've allocated all of the work here as a medium remodel, so it's more than just paint and carpet and ceilings, it's, we have some reconfigurations of minor things along the way. On the site development side, we are redoing the parking lot. As I mentioned before, there's, we have some stormwater issues here at this building, back by the current media center, where in heavy rainfalls, water gets down in the door system and then into the media center. And so we're budgeted to correct that. There is also some maintenance items with the playground, replacing the P-Rock with chips, and then some great appropriate reconfiguration there. And then during the planning process, we had talked about a storage shed for the playground equipment. So that was a budgeted item that we put in the budget. Now, the last plan that we have has some internal space that becomes allowable to use for storage, so that might be an item that, again, might be somewhat duplicative in the overall budget. But we hadn't gotten to the point yet to determine for sure if that space inside was for storage for the building or playground equipment, so we left it in the budget.
I don't think you reviewed the maintenance items.
Oh, I missed the maintenance? Yes, thank you, Steve. So half, middle of the page were the maintenance items that we talked about, and this building does contain some areas that are asbestos-containing materials, and so there are some floor tiles, almost twelve thousand square feet of floor tiles in this building that we would abate. And then, of course, if we're abating them, we need to replace that flooring, so there's two lines there. One is the abatement, and then one is the flooring to put that back in place. There's some piping also that needs to be abated for asbestos purposes. There is one portion of this building that you need to replace the roof, and that's, I think, the building that we're in today, there's a need to replace this roof. And then there are, we did budget for, as per the maintenance list, some just minor roofing areas in the rest of the building for maintenance. There are a small amount of windows down the fifty-sixth wing, I think, in that one stair tower, that those windows need to be replaced. That's a relatively small amount, but we've got that included. We allocated some dollars to correct the water intrusion here at this building. As you can see along this wall, where the paint is peeling off, that's because moisture is coming through. And so this area, and then there's a little bit of other places around the building that we have some water, and that's, it shows up under the tuck pointing section, but it's kind of a tuck pointing waterproofing. And then we also had allocated some monies towards kitchen equipment. There are some items there now that need to be repaired or replaced, and so the budget there is more of an allowance budget, because we haven't done an official assessment of the kitchen equipment specifically. And so there's going to be a portion of the kitchen equipment that gets covered under this budget too.
Is there anything to do?
For the kitchen?
Yeah.
Well, it wouldn't be enough for a replacement of everything that you have. So if we wanted to do all new equipment into that kitchen, it would not be enough. But it was our understanding and talking with staff and maintenance, is that there are pieces of equipment that need to be replaced, but not a full replacement.
So is there anything you can purchase? So those things? Those are the funds.
One last highlight that I'll mention here is that because we are budgeting in 2017, we would be bidding a project in 2018 or later, is that we've built in an escalation clause here, or a cost factor for inflation, and so we have that built in here, as well as contingency for construction and design contingency as we get into further plan and development. So again, that's all included into this. Any questions on Given?
So the bottom line then for the maintenance stuff is, is this three-point-seven?
So the, for all of the, okay, so the, actually, the maintenance stuff for Given is seven-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand.
Okay, so all this here?
This, okay, this is the total amount? This is what quickly allocated under several funding sources? You have a lot of money. You have a lot of, so? Total, this is the forty, the forty-five-point-seven million is the total for everything. Okay? But then if you look at this sheet, under the light gray areas, is the subtotals of each of these different sections. Okay, so this would be the maintenance just for here at Given.
Okay. But the total for everything you just went through is?
Is the three-point-seven.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure. Okay.
So it shows it here, it also shows it here.
Oh, right there, okay, thank you.
Kind of being slugged around to the detail, like I have a lot of information to do, it's maybe more than easy to follow. So the items that are lightly gray shaded, individual items, I think, are ones that could be discussion points, as we go through. The next page was all of the work happening at Fairfax. And so the same kind of breakdown, what are ADA items, what are building code or life safety items, what are mechanical, electrical. The highlights for the Fairfax building are, there are two sets of bathrooms that aren't ADA compliant. Again, if we look at different areas, there may be a way to highlight ones that could be used, you know, wayfair method for classrooms back and forth, so maybe one of those sets would be a discussion point. And we had budgeted, at the time, we were looking at remodeling the auditorium, there are two bathrooms down at that auditorium now. Those two bathrooms really aren't sized appropriately, I'm not even sure we could effectively make them into bathrooms.
Structurally, infeasible.
And so we had them as part of the original budget, but that, it's really, it's money, but it's not a real significant amount of money, but that's, again, one that we could look at for discussion purposes. From a building code, there, again, in the kitchen, there was a grease trap issue. Under the mechanical, electrical, there are portions of the Fairfax building that are not fire sprinkled, so we've added that into the budget. We would also look at, another small item again, the drinking fountain at the auditorium lobby, if that were to be used as a venue, not a big item there again. The rest of these do become, you know, larger items along the way, so we've got a large amount of piping in this building that is failing, it's galvanized piping, maintenance staff has over the years replaced sections of piping, so we're looking at that. From an indoor air quality or ventilation, we have ventilation in the kitchen. Many, and many of the items for the HVAC are replacing or repairing air handling units. That's kind of the next groupings of sections there. If we are, again, are using the state, the auditorium stage, we were looking at replacing the lighting above that. Egress lighting, electrical outlets, PA system, and a clock system. All of those items, like PAs and clocks, are things that you have today, but they're failing and not appropriate, so we added those in from the assessment. From the maintenance side, you also have floor tile that needs to be abated for asbestos, and a little bit of piping, asbestos piping. The good news in the Fairfax building is that your roofing is pretty current, so we didn't budget any roofing needs at Fairfax. We did look at quite a few windows replacing, so thirty-eight, fifty-eight, sixty-five, and seventy-five buildings replacing those windows. Flooring again, where we're taking out for abatement, and then also replacing ceiling and light fixtures in the areas that we would be doing a combination of fire sprinkling and some of those abatement items. I'm kind of hitting the highlights here. We're looking at replacing bleachers in that gymnasium. There is one item here at the bottom of the maintenance, which is tuck pointing, and that's primarily the nineteen-thirty-sixth building or the auditorium. In our tours, and I'm sure you've all seen it too, there are parts of that building where there's a lot of water that's getting into the building, and it's causing damage to the plaster inside. And so that building being, you know, eighty-plus years, needs some exterior tuck pointing work, so with that and windows to be replacing that. And so the way I calculated the tuck pointing is that the thirty thousand square feet of the overall wall surface, I didn't assume we were replacing all of that tuck pointing, but it would be about twenty-five percent of the building. So I know that one stair tower definitely needs it. There are areas around windows and some of the roof scuppers that need to be replaced, so it's about twenty-five percent of the wall area that would be retucked pointing. Under the renovation, again, we got modifications to kitchen equipment, not the entire kitchen, but portions of the equipment there. The next two items, I think, do become somewhat of a conversation point. We knew that if Fairfax were to be maintained as a middle school or converted to a high school, the current locker rooms would need to be renovated. The question is, from a grades three through six standpoint, are those locker rooms still needed to be updated, or, you know, what's the effort there? And so that's, again, why it's slightly shaded, because I think that becomes a conversation point. And then the auditorium again itself, there would be a new auditorium at the high school, and so what level of renovation, you know, would be the right amount of renovation at the auditorium at Fairfax? And so what's in the budget here shows that it's a fairly extensive remodel, and maybe that is a topic for discussion. From the floor plan, there are other classrooms that need to be remodeled. There are, like, as an example, there are three science classrooms there today as middle school science. Those would be converted to sixth-grade classrooms, so there would be some renovations needed there. So those next two lines show that. We're also remodeling the concessions area and adding a sink to that area. Under the site development, we have the two parking lots that I showed on the graphic. On the north side, it would be that fairly large parking lot for car and bus, I'm sorry, drop-off, and then at the south end would be the bus drop-off and the stack. And then because we're moving grades three and four over to this building, we would be adding a playground at that building also. So those are the components that we had budgeted and calculated into the Fairfax building. As we move to the Winthrop building, the sheet that you have in front of you is based on the plan option that we showed, and so that's where there's a large majority of the building that will be demolished and new construction. Before this model, there was a laundry list, it was probably about double of these, of all of the maintenance items that we would be repairing and correcting along the way, but as those older parts of the building are being demolished, those go away. So the monies that we don't spend on that maintenance and renovation, we would be spending on new construction instead. So what I've got on this sheet is primarily the highlights of the items that would be left to address, so there is, actually, two. Um, so there is, uh, actually two sets of bathrooms that are, they're, they're not by code ADA specific, but these bathrooms are in pretty good shape. So it would be minor, or minor modifications to converting those for ADA accessibility. Under the mechanical, electrical, there are portions of the, um, the building that we are keeping that is not fire sprinkled, so we would address that. Um, as we are renovating the science rooms, there are some, uh, mechanical items there with exhaust hoods and gas shut offs that we would need to address. Uh, along with some, um, work that needs to be done to the air handling units of the classroom area. And that air handling unit that's in the basement over at that facility. Uh, there is also some electrical items that are needed at the, um, science room. Upgrade the service that when they use their electric hot pots, that they don't trip breakers, which is one of the big things that we found during our assessment. Um, there is some floor abatement that needs to happen over at this building, about, you know, twenty-three thousand square feet of abatement and some piping. And, um, that would include the areas that are being demolished. Those would have to be abated during that demo period. So, we basically are correcting all of the different abatement that happens in that building, whether we're using it or not, if it's being demolished, it also needs to go. There are two roofs over on that building that, um, that are getting close to the point of discussion of being reworked. Um, and in the study that was done by your roofing consultant, those are, they're labeled as ni- uh, the areas fifteen and sixteen, which are the gymnasium and then the commons wrestling room area right outside of that area. Those roofs were last done in nineteen ninety-seven and nineteen ninety-eight. So, you know, we're getting twenty years on those roofs right now. And I've got them into the bud, worked into the budget, but that could be something that, you know, you could look at, that it was something maybe to discuss about deferring that to a later point in time. Then there also is some roofing maintenance that, that was scheduled for some of the other areas, uh, that would remain. Uh, we're replacing the windows in the nineteen sixty-three building, so that classroom wing that is still going to be maintained, we're replacing the windows there. We are re- replacing the gym flooring and the bleachers in the existing gym. And then we're renovating about twenty-two thousand square feet of the existing classrooms. So, from classrooms to the media center area that's there today throughout, uh, we're doing some remodeling there. Now, in this case, uh, the balance, uh, or the next section is the new space. So, we're building a new kitchen, so we're replacing all of the kitchen equipment in this model. And then we're adding about ninety-four thousand square feet, which is all of the areas that you saw on the graphic. So, um, administration shops, classrooms, media center, locker rooms, gymnasium spaces. We did list that third station gym here as, as a, um, a separate line item or maybe an alternate cost. Um, so that whole new construction area totals twenty, roughly twenty-five million dollars. On the site development side, we would be, uh, constructing that new parking lot that was shown in the graphic. We would also be, um, doing some work to your existing track football field, uh, including new lighting. And so, a reconstruction of your existing athletic facilities there. And then, uh, the last item on this list is, uh, the cost for, for the demolition of the existing building. We're taking down roughly fifty thousand square feet of the existing space. So that was a lot of talking, a lot of numbers. Any thoughts or questions on, is this helpful to see the detail?
Yes.
Okay, and, and so again, in that, um, you know, really motivated to be transparent through the entire process and, and for you to be able to answer questions, you know, that, that's what this report was intended to do.
Preston, without the option, proposed to us was the option for the new building, okay? If there was a new building and we were gonna do just maintenance over in Winthrop, what would it cost just in Winthrop? Cause I think people need to know that, and I think we need to understand that better, if we're just gonna do maintenance over there. I know it was a large sum, I just don't remember the number offhand.
Okay. Bear with me a second as I. See, that would have been option. Um, wi- without converting it to a different grade configuration, just keeping it a nine through twelve building, we had estimated between those primary needs and renovation areas, uh, about eleven million. That would have been like the C, the C-one model that we looked at, which was keeping the grade configurations, but just making it conducive for today's program.
Do you have a number of grade configuration and just routine maintenance?
I'm sorry?
Grade configuration, reconfiguration and just routine maintenance?
Um, the different grade configuration and maintenance, uh, that would have been, uh, nineteen point eight million. To, uh, address the maintenance items, the renovations, and then the additional space that would be needed.
And that's just maintenance, that's not really some of these other improvements that are line items that we can talk about if we do or don't wanna do, correct?
Well, so like in that case, um, I think to answer your question, it's kind of a combination. There are, you know, the effort kind of crosses over a little bit, and so it's not, you know, just a, here's the number, here's the number. But, but it did address, you know, a lot of the, well, it, in either case, it addressed all of the maintenance and the re- renovation numbers. But there were different variations on what additions might mean.
Right.
Can you refresh what the cost was for the total project of the three buildings? With Winthrop not being the, the new configurate, you know, having it the seven twelve, what we're talking about, the basic, I believe was that thirty-six, was that thirty-six million? To do, um, all three buildings and just address the issues, but not a long-term solution? Because we would be keeping so much of the old building?
Is that C, two point three?
Yeah, that was, uh, thir- that was option C point two point three at thirty-four million.
Thirty-four million, okay. Thirty-four million.
A new building?
No, that was just keeping.
Did you draw up a seven through twelve and a new building?
That would be to, um, keep Winthrop.
Yeah, forgetting that building, one of the whole brand new building. You're demolishing part of it, you've been building.
Mm-hmm. Oh, you're saying so, even the parts that.
But what if you build a seven through twelve and made it where you add on to it in ten years?
Well, that's part.
You know, what's the cost of it?
This was to remodel.
To build a new seven through, to build a new seven through twelve, that was thirty-six million, just, just.
Yeah, so that's, but that figure is, is it has the, the one auditorium and our two-story that we're keeping. What he's saying is if you demolished everything, you start over scratch, so that would add in those additional costs.
You start over.
Oh.
Right. But you're still keeping an old building, you're part of it.
We're, we're keeping the existing gymnasium and nineteen sixty-three classroom additions.
Which is an old building.
But there's a lot of remodeling that sixty-three, sixty-three wing.
The, the, one of the challenges we ran into from a new, a totally new construction in Winthrop was, um, if you did it on the existing site where it is today, then there's, uh, really no chance to phase that. So what do you do with students for roughly that two-year period of time?
The thing we thought is those, we bought a different new land.
New land.
Built, we could still be using that, that, and that would be a factor, that would be the cost of that new building then. All that would be gone, start from scratch.
Then make it where you can add on to it years down the road.
Yeah, so in that case, the thirty-six million was the, was just the new seven twelve part. Those, that option, when you add in the Fairfax and the, the given, got over fifty million.
If you're starting with a brand new building?
If this were to go through, what, what is our alarm, what are we looking at, fifty years, sixty years, what is this, what is the solid value?
Yeah, and that's partly what the, the decision was just fix at seventeen million, which was gonna get us to the eight, ten years out, you know, with our issues just coming right back up again. Um, so when we talked about with the, um, renovations, the thirty-four million was about a twenty-year, because, uh, those older, those older sections, still trying to keep and tweak enough, um, that those structurally, in twenty years, we were probably gonna have to come back and talk about it again. Whereas, um, looking at the, the one that the board came to the board, and that's why we kind of arrived at that decision, was we were looking at a good structurally, what they were gonna do even to those, the, the gym and that one week, structurally what was going to happen then for all three of our sites, um, was a good, you know, we are looking at a good fifty, I mean, roofs and those kind of maintenance things happening. But as for the building structures themselves, which kudos to who built these three structures when we're really looking at eighty-year-old plus buildings, you know, and, and they've had their times, so being able to redo and, and do the upgrades needed, um, that was really the thought, was it was a long-term fix that we wouldn't have to keep coming back to the taxpayers then for building issues, if we, to keep something solid in all three communities.
Um, I, I think our, one last point is, is we did get to the end of the task force process, we looked at those, we narrowed it down to those four options. We, um, debated the merits of each of those options and really did come to a consensus. In fact, it was a unanimous vote for this being the option that met the priorities and objectives established by the group. There, you know, there are a few people that would have liked to see another option as their primary, but they all supported this option as the one to bring to you.
I think the information we have to understand and get out to the public is how much our maintenance really is. I mean, bottom line, what our basic, kind of the numbers you're just throwing out, what our maintenance is, cause it's huge. And so that's what we have to decide as a board, is are we just gonna go to the public, to the taxpayers, to just do just the basic maintenance, just to maintain for what, another ten years or so?
Max, yep.
Or do we look at the long-term fix and, what is it, eleven, twelve million more? Is that the number? It's like thirty-four million just for our maintenance, correct?
About, just, just to patch and fix, I think was just shy of seventeen million, not moving anybody anywhere, patch and fix, seventeen million.
And then you just gave us a thirty-four million number?
Right, and that was then to, um, utilize, cause part of what I think the tax, um, force was looking at was our viability into the future. So, how do we, um, with greater needs on students to provide them opportunities, how do we utilize who we are and what we are to do that? And that got into the whole programming of the seven twelve, because high license are seven twelve.
Right.
So if we can put seven twelve together, we can offer more course offerings for our students to give them, um, a greater educational experience. And then, so to, to make that happen, that, keeping everybody in place, um, and the high school in Winthrop was the thirty-four million. However, it didn't fix the, the flow, the building flow of things to do, um, and the use of it. So we were just kind of, you know, redoing some things in front of the auditorium, fixing bathrooms. It was still, you know, this very section trying to move around, which didn't, um, create a good sense of space for what we're doing. And keeping so much of the old structure meant twenty years instead of long-term. So then that's what, what jumped it up to, you're right, another twelve million, trying to invest now to take care of it way into the future.
Well, I think the board's first decision has to be, are we gonna do grade for reconfiguration or not? I mean, and if we decide to move forward, then that's a different set of options than if we don't. So, I mean, that really needs to be, the first thing that we decide is are we gonna do grade reconfiguration? And then, from there, what do we do, if, if in fact that's what we wanna do?
Uh, and at, at the given site, we are, we are, we are to, to the gills, so to speak, on that. And trying to add, um, wraparound services, so before and after school daycare, because that's been all three communities. I'm now trying to provide, um, the option of during the day when they're not in preschool for who is in preschool. And to, to put that all together, that kind of said, okay, what could fit in the space to make that work? So that's why we got to the pre-K two piece of it. So then, then you're looking at the, the other components. Um, and I hope the board will really realize that having, at the size of school we are, having seven twelve together educationally, um, that reconfiguration, though costly, is gonna provide the best benefit to give our students the most educational choices that we can offer them to do that. And, um, whether or not we like to, you know, we, you know, used to, schools were one thing, and as they evolved over time, we've gotta think more on that business line of things. And if we've got competing, cause we're competing, we've got buses from all of our neighboring school districts coming in and out of our towns all the time. So if we aren't competing in an educational value way, we're gonna lose students. Right now, we are a loser to open enrollment. We have students going elsewhere because of the educational offerings that other can do. So, um, I know it's a tricky balance between what we do, but, um, I think that's a piece of the, the bigger picture we need to look at, as we need to draw and retain and hopefully stabilize that out. And it would be great if we could be the winner on open enrollment with the ability of what we're able to offer.
I think that's one thing too, is, um, people need to know or understand where what our enrollment has been and that we aren't, um, our enrollment is not declining. Cause I've heard that through some people that they think that our enrollment is declining, and that is not the case. I know we could have more students here if we had some of those other opportunities you were just talking about, but they're going out to other districts because of different opportunities that can have there that we can't provide, so.
If we look at our resident base, we're, we're holding pretty stable. But we're a loser to open enrollment, so that's why, you know, we've got some smaller class sizes, so, um.
No, no.
The.
However, though, what, what I think Tammy is saying is if you have seven twelve in a school, you have those licensure, you have the teachers that, you know, they're not traveling back and forth, you can provide some more opportunities, maybe some of the eighth graders, that you can't do so easily if you have staff traveling back and forth because of licensure issues.
Well, and, and some we just don't, cause we can't have them travel back and forth. So that A classes, middle school, you know, language classes, um, hopefully some more of our STEM and math classes. We, we've got nice class sizes right now. We've, we've got nice class sizes right now, so we've got room to kind of reconfigure to do some of that. And with the increased shop availability, our choir and bands then being able to have, you know, greater capacity for filling that together, utilizing those kind of opportunities. And you're right, we've got, I think it'll just strengthen and offer more.
The Winthrop school as is now, how many, how many students can that hold? How many, I know we had that in here somewhere, but I mean, like, right now it's a nine through twelve.
Winthrop now is two sixty-three.
And we've bantered that around a little bit as in the admin, if we, we could do that. And just where things are right now and the way the rooms, aren't good use of spaces with those things. We'd be really pigeonholing in to try to get seven-twelve in there to, to make that work. There, there are some, there are some different rooms and spaces, but to take two grade levels and move them out in there would have been the, the difficult piece of that. But you move one, and now you got seventh grade, I mean, that's, you're, you're, they're an island on their own then because they have more of a middle school need. So that's why the seventh, you know, if you kept seventh and eighth grade, or you really need to move seventh and eighth grade together, 'cause we want, you know, we'll need to start looking at all those various licensures. And then now we're gonna come up short on the other end if we leave one grade back. Yep.
I think your capacity is, you know, right now you're right, just under eight hundred. And there'd certainly be room for another hundred, hundred and fifty students.
And what's our contingency plan if we go ahead, go to the voters and it gets voted down? You know, we wanna do the reconfiguration, but they said no. What do we do then?
I, I think we, we would need to then go back to the drawing board. I mean, what's been your play if this, if a project didn't pass under the first?
That's a very interesting question, because every district has its unique characteristics. I've had two districts that if the referendum, what, the referendum did fail the first time, they came out and asked for more because they felt that it didn't go far enough, and those passed, both passed on the second attempt. The more likely scenario for this project would be that you would look to defer or downscale some of the items that are listed. That's why I talked a little bit about some of the items I think are for, for consideration even in this bond, because you, you look at that and to say, you know, can that be supported? But then how far can you take it back? I think if this one were to not pass, it, it would be anywhere from just doing the deferred maintenance items all the way back up to something similar to what we had today. And, you know, that, that can be a pretty wide range in between. But for the most part, the needs are the needs, and it's just a matter of addressing them now or sometime in the future. And then what's the cost associated with addressing it five years from now as opposed to today?
And I think you'd need to find out the reasons why it failed. You know, either survey the community or, or the people in the community to see if it's just purely cost. Is it because of the grade configuration changes? You know, not wanting to do that much work at Winthrop, you know, find out what the core reason is.
You know, I, I think in this case too, the task force was very considerate to realize that the, one of the very highest priorities was to keep a building in each of the locations, in the communities. You know, where a lot of them, including a neighboring district here, where you started with consolidating down to one school, when that doesn't pass, then you go the other way. So, you, you know, I, I, I think that the task force did a nice job of understanding what they believe the communities could support. But this is very personal, and it, it becomes very personal 'cause it's tax included. You know, if, if you didn't have to worry about a tax impact, I think it would be a pretty simple decision, but it has to be affordable.
You're sitting in the farming community where you're not, you're going at the wrong time. So you better, I mean, it better be a dang good reason why you're rebuilding it.
Well, and that's, that egg, egg to school credit, I.
Everybody I've talked to already, nobody has a problem with it. If there's legitimate reason, you need it. But if you need it because other towns are doing it, they're not gonna like that. You need it because your town needs it? I don't think most people have a problem with that. You start talking forty dollars an acre on egg, egg stuff, that's a lot of money. You know, you can go to a city, then you can pay two, three hundred dollars a year, but you're talking about farmers that are paying ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars. You know, and you can take any credit you want.
What the figures were, how much was it per acre?
I think the max they had on there was seven thousand per acre, and we asked them to redo that, which they'll have for the board meeting.
Yeah. From, from this chart. And if I can go backwards.
Look at the seven thousand dollars.
Seven thousand, it was going to be roughly eight, eight dollars, twenty-two cents an acre.
Yeah, but I got, I read from other people in other towns that build schools now, and they're not talking about seven, eight dollars an acre, they're talking twenty, thirty dollars.
Well, difference is the word.
That's with the egg credit.
It's spread out.
We have more, much larger tax plates.
You know, some of these school districts are really.
Very small.
We always can work it out, the problem just stored.
And also, I actually, I quoted the wrong number for today's legal or, or current law. Eight twenty-two is within the school tax credit, it would be thirteen seventy-one for what was projected on this report.
For how many years?
Twenty.
Thirteen dollars seventy-one for, if, if it doesn't pass through the Senate, if the governor doesn't sign it.
I know when we were at the last board meeting, Shelby from Heller, she mentioned the best thing for any agricultural owner is to contact them and actually get the exact quotes. If, if there appears to be quite a bit of difference of what becomes non-homesteaded property versus what you do give credit for on homestead, I can't answer that question. The best thing is for them to answer that question for you. So very specific, they call it the parsing numbers, and they'll tell you what your tax impact would be. Because these charts are pretty accurate from the residential side, but they're just kind of a best guess on the agriculture side. So you really do need to call specifically for that.
And Shelby said to call them directly.
Yep.
Well, and the legislature needs to get their act together and find out whether we're talking with the creditors there or not.
Definitely be nice to know that today. Obviously, by, by November seventh, we'll, we'll know whether it was approved or vetoed or, yeah.
And is that good for the full twenty years, or is it just a partial for a few years?
The state legislate, legislators that have spoken on this topic, I didn't mean to stand with Steve. Nothing in politics is guaranteed, but they have also stated that they couldn't think of a program that was offered that was rescinded from a tax standpoint. Now, they could change the, the legislation in the coming years, but they won't go and take something away from you that they've given. So once the bond is, is terminated or ended, then it might go away at that point. Now, that, that's what the legislators have said.
Well, you'd think. Well, and our maintenance issues aren't going away, so, you know.
I have a question for you, Tammy, just for the benefit of everyone here in the public as well. Part of how we got you, you were explaining to me how the process all started, you know, back ten years ago. You were talking about the urban and the rural school funding disparities and the steps that you had to go through. You know, do you understand what I'm, what I'm saying here? Would you explain that to us and to the group here a little bit?
Yeah, again, the, the legislature decided to change funding mechanisms. There was an inequity for long-term facilities maintenance for buildings. So metro area had a greater funds available to them for upkeep and upgrades of their school buildings than the rural schools did. So there was a, a large drive to address that inequity of funding. And when they did that, that's when they went to this long-term facilities maintenance. So this was, this will be now three years ago that that happened. So when they did that, they tried again to correct a very complicated system, which is school funding. And they said, okay, if we're going to resolve this issue of inequity, we need to maybe take some of the current pots of money that we receive, like health and safety, capital outlays. So those then were kind of removed and to put into one on different categories. In order to receive these funds, which were gonna be amped up over time, that we had to submit a long-term facilities maintenance plan. So we had to write up a ten-year plan for what we saw. Now, again, legislature passed, we heard about it in July, and by the middle of August, we had to have our plan into the state in order to get our money to know that it was going to come in, in this capacity. So we had our facilities committee together, we met, we looked at it, we started talking about almost a lot of what Preston addressed. So our, our asbestos abatement with our floors, our pipes that are, our tuck pointing issues, our roof issues, everything, and put it into a plan. And at that point in time, with just a committee of those that worked here and looked at things, trying to pull numbers from the best we could with roofs, we came to somewhere just over about four million dollars at that time. And we weren't going to get four million dollars in the long-term facilities maintenance. So we had more needs in our quick estimate than we were gonna do. So then the state wouldn't pass our plan unless we could address how we were going to make up for the shortfall in funds that we said we needed just to take care of our buildings to keep them going. And that's when, talked to the board about it and decided that at that point in time, we should probably look at a larger scale, bring in an entity to help us look at that specifically, have engineers, electrical engineers, plumbing, everybody else come in and walk around and give us in detail what our needs were. So we submitted that, said we were gonna go to the voters, this was our plan, so we were approved. So then last year, when it came up again, every year we have to do an update, again, they, by then, it had crept up to what we thought was gonna be more like eight or ten million by the information we got through last year. And they stated, we can't approve it unless you say, and that's when we said we are gonna be hiring some consultants to help us get a plan, and we'll be going to our voters with something, we didn't know what, but something that would address our shortfall. So that was last year in August. So that's why we contacted Ari Morton and, and brought in, and Steve and GLTA architects to do that. And that's when the final number rolled out to say, to take care of what you need to for building needs is between that sixteen and seventeen million. And we developed the task force committee to look at that. And then that committee started the hard talk and discussion. We walked around all three buildings, we looked at how we were utilizing, what was happening, and great vibrant conversations with everybody at that task force of looking at all those fifteen different options and the pluses and the minuses and what we were doing. And that's what got us today, is when we looked at the best utilization of the, the greatest educational benefit we could give to our students in the area and the facilities we needed in order to do that. And then what would be the best long-term solutions, we weren't having to continually come back to our taxpayers. And that led us to our final decision, that.
Well, that's, the point is, it's not that we are building a new building just because other towns are building new buildings. We're doing it because it's part of the funding process, you know, the application for funding process, that's how the whole thing started.
We can understand that, but you gotta explain that to four thousand other people.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
And they gotta know that, because it's their money to spend.
I think what was helpful for the task force is when they did the tours of all the three buildings. And a lot of the people, you know, were familiar, familiar with one or maybe two of the buildings, but not that familiar with all three of the buildings. And it, there's a lot of discussion about, that they didn't wanna go through this process and just put paint on the walls and, and have the same tired old buildings when we get done with this. That there really was a feeling that let's do something that's gonna make an impact over, over many years.
Do we, Lana, Chair Whiteley, did you want to?
Yeah, sure.
Open up and ask?
First of all, is there any other questions from the board here? So then we can open it up. Are there any questions from the audience out here that you'd like to bring to the board here? Preston, Tammy, yes?
I thank you for explaining the process, and we're not trying to, don't, that was one of my concerns. I, one of my other biggest concerns is my mother-in-law would pay above two, fifteen, sixty dollars at her home in Gibbon. We pay a whole lot of money on our five hundred acres out on the farm. How can we, how can you justify that, and how can we mitigate that?
Well, this is gonna be a state law make-up issue. And, and Tammy, if you have any input on that?
Well, that's why we real, we know we need that. I was, the egg to school credit was in the tax bill last year, and then he vetoed the tax bill, even though, so we were hoping by coming into this discussion that that would have already happened. So we would already know, we were getting the egg credit. So we were very excited again this year when we went, we were hearing, yes, actually, the House and the Senate went to fifty, and the governor was at forty. So when we've been out, doing all of our lobbying, lobbying on this issue in particular a lot, because we know that it's crucial for us in this community to get that. And they were saying, well, we're, we're sure to be forty, somewhere between forty. So, yeah, we sit here with bated breath going, okay, everything's vetoed, please don't let this go down with everything else that's good. We've asked them if it could be pulled off separately because they all agree on it. It was just a matter of where was it gonna be between the forty and the fifty? That was, well, you know, everybody's got their own pieces that they want, wanna do with that, and it comes together. It is, my greatest hope and desire was at a finance meeting, and Tom Melcher, who oversees all school finance, we hit him up again on Friday with it, and he said, it is the one thing everybody agrees on, and it's just a matter of getting that, that tax, the whole tax bill taken care of that they can go through. But that's not even disputed by anybody of having that come to play. So I hope that they can just agree on a tax bill, 'cause we know that that's gonna happen if we get, if they'll sign an agreed tax bill. because we know that that's going to happen if we get, if they'll sign an agreed tax bill.
Can you guys give us some specific numbers? And because I, if you write in the legislative call, then it makes a difference. I was an interim Senator Dayton for three years. It makes a difference. Call and write in legislators.
Yeah, are you okay, Tammy? I would agree with you. I'm just trying to make sure. Yeah, and they're all, they're all going to say yes. They're going to say yes. So, we just need to get past everything else.
And, well, we made the recommendation that Dayton too.
Yep, yep. And he's a yes on it too. We just need to get all of the stuff that's surrounding our yes taken care of so that we can get our yes put through on that. But I would, I would agree. Saw the representatives from Aylers last week again, and they, they were definitely, we want you to, and we'll post how to call them, but call on your specific parcels. I am, I am in no way an expert in this. I mean, I feel like not even a drop in the bucket when we look at this piece of it with the tax impact when it comes to aid land. Because she was trying to explain to me how homestead doesn't mean you need to be right next door. It could be so far over and it, so I, I would say, call Aylers specifically with yours. They would be able to right now tell you without the 40 and with the 40. And right now, they're quoting the 40 because that's a solid base. And we know anything more than that would be fantastic. But they can give you the 40 right now for what your parcels of land would be. And I, I don't have it right off the top of my head right now, but I will get that and I'll have it posted on the web so everybody can do that.
Everybody makes sense, it's a big view, I mean, 40% reduction. That's still online if you're on non-homesteaded farms. You know, it's not like, ooh, 40% off. It's a little different than paying $50 on a house and town.
Yeah, I'm a landowner myself, so I feel everyone's paying here the same way. Yes?
And I think everybody, so maybe everybody pretty much agrees that these three buildings have to be moved, have to be moved on. Now, I don't know if this is the general public, I should have told them before, but what other options? We're talking about land that Fairfax has plenty of. Winthrop, as I understand, I think our loan has to acquire three properties. Is this correct? Have those yields been set yet? How much of that has been caused? Are the people who own this, I mean, are they willing to just turn this over or are they heavy-handed, say that this is evidence of maybe? Or is this a sure thing that they can acquire it? And what is the cost going to be? And the thing is, there is no cost for land they do in high school to Fairfax. So, keeping that rate, you wouldn't have to do all that, that's a burden. I don't know, I understand that being cheaper. They will all be able to get, that's for sure. Well, you know, a million dollars here, that adds up.
Sure. I, Preston, perhaps you can refresh. There was a contingency also, maybe you talked about that, Tammy. We cannot acquire the property.
Well, and we've informed the property owners that this would be a part of that, invited them to the other. We haven't gotten any, into any discussions because the board hasn't even approved that this is a go yet or not. So, that has to happen first at a board meeting. So, if that happens, I did inform those property owners that if the board should choose this, that then we would need to get into a fair market value kind of discussion on that. That would have a lot of contingencies, be contingent based upon the passage of this on November 7th. So, those discussions will happen. They've been preliminarily contacted, but not until we know it's a go because they haven't said it's a go yet, so.
Has there been any cost analysis on having a high school in Fairfax? Or is it safe?
That was one of the options that the task force had, Preston. Do you want to tell us about the differences in the costs?
That option was what we called Option C. 3, where the 712 would be moved here to Fairfax and Winthrop would be the 3 through 6 building. That came at 31.6 million.
What would the total package be?
That was the total for all three.
So, 32, 32, 32, 32.
So, would we flip it?
Yeah, if we.
Flip it?
Yeah, and didn't do the major renovation, if we just did the basic.
Also, I think you remember, it's not just a, farmers own major businesses. We have to go off to the apartment, your own, so who's going to pay for this? Farmers.
And I think the original difference we tried to bring up before was the Winthrop with the renovations that, you know, either way was about a 20-year plan, was the 30, what was the quote you just gave us for Fairfax having high school?
32 million.
32 million. And it was just over 34 million if we kept the high school in Winthrop, right?
Kept just the high school.
Right. So, we were looking at about a little over a 2 million difference. And that's why the task force decided to keep it, the high school in Winthrop, and then took the next step to say, is, is that though the longest, will that have the longest impact and the best investment of our dollars long-term? And then that's when it went up to the proposal you see today. So, I just, there's that. It was the 32 versus the 34. And then, once it kind of got to there, then it was, we want to have a, the long-term fix, not the 20-year or so year fix. So, that's why that leap happened.
Other questions, comments, yes?
Do we have any enrollment to the conference?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Do we have enrollment to just press that? Do we have any additional questions here?
Well, our enrollment has been stable. You know, we went through a period of decline some time ago, but that has stabilized and it was increasing now. I've been on the board probably the longest here. Way back when I started on the board, there was a demographer that came in and was talking about trends. And for our school district, the growth is specifically on the eastern side of the district. That's where, what he told us at that time. Whereas Fairfax, you know, in that, you know, it's more ag, it's more scattered out. There's more business opportunities, I suppose, along 15. I don't know the reason, but, but that's what he said. And they had kind of predicted that the trend was going down. Right when I started on the board, we had to do a pretty substantial budget cut because we lost a lot of our membership. We were, we went, I'm just thinking off the top of my head now. It was, we'd gone down into the 700 someplace. And it was, we had lost quite a few students, you know, at a very rapid rate. It was about the same time HTI closed down Hector and Hutchinson, I mean. And we had lost a couple of other businesses in rapid succession. And that's why the decline was in population. But that has stabilized and it has started increasing again now. So, you know, long-term, have you discussed it at all, Tammy, for?
Well, and they're, they're still talking about that metro loop now starts to hit the Winthrop area. So, that was a big part of the discussion of moving high schools or not. And you're moving it away from your greatest growth. And the biggest draw a lot of times is where your high school is located. So, that idea would have had a negative impact on student enrollment from what we are getting if you moved it farther away from where your greatest growth is. So, that's, that was another indicator for why we would want to do that. Another piece that came into play, I don't know how much that will continue to do, but we also looked at, all right, Gaylord, we know this, the rural medical school coming into Gaylord. Having the high school still in Winthrop would hopefully allow us some medical partnerships with what's happening there, where we would lose that capability if we moved the high school over to Fairfax. So, that, we kind of talked through all those scenarios of how that could be and wanting to make sure that the design that was presented kept attracting student populations to keep us where we were and hopefully a little bit of growth.
Yes?
I want to put GFW together a little back there. We got a whole house of students at that time, three school districts. And it was set up with a middle school concept. And I just hope America will get away from the middle school. The middle school concept of having three districts, something that worked good. And a lot of the good schools were going to go that now too. So, I hate to see everybody switch to one school. And also, it's, with this less population, with less enrollment, we have got a lot, they should have more room. It's got a lot of classes. I'm sure this has been discussed a lot, a lot of things have been discussed. There is a lot of things that are, I don't know why we need all the eggs to move. That's, we're 200 left kids.
And like we said, we were trying to add, so the daycare, the wraparound, the preschool services here. And as you've probably heard, too, the governor's pushed for universal pre-K. So, we need, would need space for that. And that would take, that would take in account our three and four-year-old population trying to do that. And we don't have the room here at Givens for that. So, then we're trying to move third and fourth grade somewhere over. This configuration still allows, you're right, for some community space so that where the old shop classes could still be utilized as community space somewhere. But the majority of everything else, by having it third through sixth, gave us a population that would fill the rest of that building except for that, that old shop area, aid area, which we would continue, which we're trying to do right now with Fairfax, is use it as a community space for them to use and to rent and others possibly too, so we can generate some income with that, that space there.
What just ends with wrapping up, kids are becoming, if it's that tight space built here, should have, I'm sure it's all been discussed, people, of your needs. I'm sure it's all been discussed, people, of your needs.
Yes?
Just trying to, what actually does it say? Do we have more special education requirements or needs for those special education rooms and things like that now? Can we get, first, start out as a joint district and are those groups in production? Let's make it on that, if we need. Does that make any sense?
Some are localizing those within the areas so that we aren't isolating those groups of populations into different areas. So, this renovation allowed us to really put those classes within their peers' areas to do that. Yeah, you know, like we need the motor room. You need more of those kind of physical spaces to do that. That was a lot of our concern with the ADA bathrooms. If we did have students in wheelchairs, where we have accessibility to do that and how we get them where we need to in each one of our buildings, even some adaptations this next year at the high school. We realized we couldn't get a student if we had them in a wheelchair and things with our current configurations. So, yes, we're providing better space to address those student needs in this plan.
Yes?
Can you just run the elementary? How does that work with your, your special needs teachers, speech, education, whatever? Are they just going to be running that in front of the elementary floor? You know, maybe, maybe even preschool here and wrap it up in Givens. There's some, it's not, we pulled out a lot of the older part and then to, you know, K through 6, and now they didn't, but still have a daycare, a body daycare center. There was something a lot, uh, to make.
Yeah, and I, I think, I mean, now we're getting a little bit wet to address, if it's okay, Chair, okay? The speech right now, we do, we have itinerant staff for all of those, for the OT, PT, and all of that. So, they, they go between the buildings now. That, that would continue in some capacity. So, I'm not sure we would have a whole lot of difference in that.
I would say some of the obstacles, maybe early life administration, you don't have preschool, it's all, you've got, it's all, and I think it would be 200, 300.
And we just, you know, that would take a whole nother renovation site to add because we were able to fit it in with the 3 through 6. So, when you're.
If you came from that.
Yep.
For any illustration.
Correct. You'd need, yep, an early ed oversight and then a middle school or a, an intermediate, they call it when it's a 3 through 6.
Yes?
When I talk to people about this issue, they seem very concerned about affordability. And compared to the often names to the metro bill, which was built for $55 million in 1982. You know, adjusted for inflation, that was a very different. But if you look at the resources of this district, you know, we have a state and a farming economy. We've got almost a non-existent industrial and commercial base. We've got elderly people trying to survive. We have a low interest rate anywhere. You know, you talk about a hundred dollars is a hundred million. Well, a 75-year-old widow with $50,000 CD at 2% and 1% interest gets a hundred dollars a year, total interest. So, telling her that this is affordable, you know, might not, you know, she might not feel that that's accurate. So, I'm just wondering, the board, you know, do you really think a district this size can support a $46 million dollar goal? I mean, based on the analysis you've done, based on the discussions you've had with other people, based on the resources you know we have in this district?
Well, it's, as a board, we're looking at, we talked about, we have to do so much for maintenance. You know, we're trying to look at a long-range, a long-range project here so that we don't have to keep coming back and asking for more and more dollars to keep maintaining. That's our, that's my thought anyways. I can't speak on everyone's behalf here, but I guess if any other board members have any other.
What's the magic number where you get the most bang for your dollars? I mean, you certainly don't want to overspend, but I don't want to go through this process again in three to five years because we did it on the cheap and now different needs have arose. And we have to go back to the debt payers again and say, you know, yeah, we screwed up. We need more money. That's absolutely the worst-case scenario it is. So, you know, it's, you know, we've got to do something. We have to, we have to move forward. We can't just let our buildings.
And I agree, but if I could just follow up. So, when the brick and mortar retail was set down years ago, then people will never give up the experience of touching and feeling something just still. And they minimize the potential for online, and they've been literally compliant. You know, Sears is posting stores, Macy's is posting stores. A lot of companies that have been around for a hundred years are posting stores because they were blindsided by technological changes that they couldn't perceive. Any students in the GFW school district that tries to be there can experience college classes from the vast professors at Harvard and MIT at essentially no cost. And do we really think that that's not going to change the way education is going to be done? So, when you think about the law. So when you think about the long term, I know you're trying to get a target. And we can expect you to know what things are going to look like ten years out or twenty years out. Well, we have to take into account that they're going to be wrapped and changing the way education is being done. And if we pour a whole load of money into bricks and mortar facilities, that they're going to be obsolete because of technological change. You know, isn't that a potentially enormous problem?
Yeah, what do you suggest?
You're right, we don't know. The unknown is self-spirited. But for us, we have to do, we have to do what we know at this moment. And at this moment, this is the information that we have, this is the research that is done. Wait, now we just have to base our information based on what the knowledge district is, and what it's needed at this time. It's so hard in the future, and it's scary. But the whole point is we just have to hold the buttons all right now and try and follow one so that we can continue to win dollars.
But if I could add the risk in doing, if you pour all your resources in the bricks and mortar and leave behind five years from now, something is needed for the educational interest crush of the rest of these capabilities to be. And we don't have the money to get it. Then we're really screwing schools.
Yeah, I, I'm just, you bring up an interesting scenario with something with the online. And I think when we all heard that years ago and then everybody went and, you know, the whole online. It's funny how that pendulum went way over and now it's coming straight back. School district I used to work for decided to add a whole component because the students were trying to do online schooling, but they needed the teacher's support of someone there while they were doing it. So as a result, now we're getting those students that like that individualized learning, but we need it back in a brick and mortar building. So now we're building brick and mortar buildings specifically to house online learning for students to come in and have individualized instruction. But they need the teacher there. They realize that that wasn't, unless you had that kind of support within the home with the parent who was there, those students were very successful. But the students that didn't have that support at home needed the, the support of, of teachers on staff. So now we're going back to the brick and mortar to incorporate the technology with that educational value.
And I think when it comes to people or bricks and mortar, people are far greater of importance than educated kids. But if there's a hybrid model, for example, where people do part-education at home and part-school, that would need to be far less sophisticated resources. You know, I, I guess what I'm saying is, I, I appreciate that you've looked into this, but when, you know, some of the, some of the best universities would have to be wondering about the future of bricks and mortar. And, and we're thinking about pouring more money than ever in the history of this district of bricks and mortar. You know, have we done enough study to justify that right now?
I think we need to ensure that you will keep up with technology today. Because thirty years ago, the education has changed from when I graduated thirty years ago. I need to ask my seventh grader how to help me on the computer. So reassure us that, and I think far, but reassure that you are keeping up with the computer labs and the technology instruction.
Yeah, that's a priority.
I am a homemaker, I am a rigger and I am helping my children as much as they will let me. But they have to help me as much as I'm able.
And we're always trying to focus on technology, what we, what we can afford to do. You know, starting with the iPad initiative and, and moving, we've, we've always been trying to be in for at least the forefront or as, as advanced as we can afford to be with the technology aside because we all know that's.
Remember, we were the first school district in the United States to have an iPad for every seat, for every high school. So we started that. It's one of the things we're always, I believe the rest of the board here also agrees with me that we do keep that in our forefront. Mr. Warner here has done a very good job. He is now taking us to Google Books. Is that what I'm, right? Or Chromebooks. See, I'm not that technical either.
Are we looking at any new programs or anything from the high school to attract students? Because the new building is going to attract kids. It's the programs that are in the schools that are going to attract students and you don't have enough in this right now that prepares our kids for college? Or is there some interest on what they want to do in college?
Some of it is with our licensure.
Yes, she's a little step up one.
So that, that is exactly the reason why we want to put the seven, twelve teacher licensures together because then we can fill classes to capacity, we can do more individualized instruction to see.
Are we looking at different programs? Are we looking at programs inside? Are we looking at all the, are we looking at causing college? What programs are we looking at to have?
Well, first we have to have the space and then we will add the programs.
But we need to have ideas on what to do before you're going to build. If you don't know what you're going for when you build a building, if you're going to need an ad shop, if you're going to need.
Yeah, and, yeah.
If you need to know what you're.
Yeah, and that's, that's exactly the questions we went through and why. The design of the high school building is to give us those spaces to really do this, to look at more of the, the ability to do the engineering and the, the space for that. And that we've got greatly added the, the shop spaces and the technology programming and the broadcasting. And all those are those instructional pieces that we wanted to make sure we're in the building to meet the needs of those kind of training situations for vocational. And that's, that's another reason why that larger leap happened was because it allowed us to do all of those instructional programs that we think could be solid for students going forward now when where we see trends are to offer those spaces. And that we could do in this configuration where some of the others, it was a matter of expanding and just tweaking space without really making it a great viable educational space to, to meet those programming needs.
And these aren't the final designs yet. This was to get us to a point. We met with the leadership team, we identified spaces that are needed. Those lab spaces will be flexible and have infrastructure with water, electricity, low voltage. But as this moves forward, we'll be kind of starting over to design the spaces, the individual spaces inside of this. So we provided enough space for the program and enough information for R.A. Morton to put some cost to that. But we haven't designed the individual spaces yet.
Now with the asbestos abatement in all three buildings, are we finally done with it or is there still something to be done?
According to the report that your consultant who does your abatement survey, that would take care of everything. Not, not to say that when you do some exploratory demolition, you find some things that you, you know, but for the most part of what is known and identified, it covers that.
So the programming is what comes up a lot. A lot of people that I talk to want a program. And my fear is, are we going to be able to, to pay to add more staff for these programs? Like, are we going to have the building, can we fill? Because it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, with our high school, we don't have enough teachers to offer all of these courses that these students want to take. And then that's why they're finding these courses offered other places. So are we going to grab these courses that we want? And are we going to be able to afford to pay for official teachers to fill this, this new building and offer this? Because it's great if we have these new buildings, but what's going to happen inside that is going to change. It's going to make it a feeless.
And I think that's a restructure of utilizing what, who we have right now to see. Part of that is if we can, wow, if we can maximize the space that we have. We have some very small classes right now happening, so to offer more, we, we need the students in there to do that. Now we could maximize those licenses when we have seven through twelve to see. And yep, there will be a shift in kind of where does everybody kind of fall in, in place to be. And then to build, will that be right away first? We've got to have the student bodies to fill the programs. As soon as we get the student bodies, they generate the money and we'll gladly continue to add programs as fast as we can.
But do we have to add students in order for that to happen? Can we have the programming, can we have the staff here with what we already have?
With our students right now, the programming would come by a reshuffle of our current license. So I, I wouldn't say, unless we get a growth by the time this is done. Hopefully we would, like I said, retain some of that loss we have to open enrollment, that happened. And we gained, you know, as soon as you gain thirty, forty students, you know, that has a significant impact on being able to hire. So I can't state that for sure right now until we get to that point and where's our student population at. Our discussion right now is just to reshuffle, to offer greater. We have some teachers that aren't quite on full-time. It would maybe be more expanding those to full-time to, to offer that for right now. The goal is to have enough so we can be having three full classes, you know, getting that population back up into the student population, about sixty at a graduating class. And then that generates, to make that happen, but that will take time.
How many students are we losing though?
Oh man, you know, every day that's a different number. Yeah, but we're, we're a good, over a hundred students right now that we're losing to open enrollment for a variety of reasons. That's, you know, parochial school, so it takes into account all of those issues to do that. Some of that is special ed placement out, that's our students, so.
So does thirty-one thousand that will look at for Winthrop, that does not include buying that property? Thirty-one million.
Yeah, let's run with that.
Okay, thirty-one million, that does not include purchasing that property. So that would be included on property. So that number would go up in the price. Now, purchasing this property, what would the purpose of that be for second gym? Two new gymnasiums? Or just the, I mean, five children, two new gyms?
It really was kind of a combination of quite a few different things. One was, you know, the placement of where the gymnasiums are happens to be where those houses are, but it's not a component of the gymnasiums. It's the overall package, including the bus drop-off, the parking lot, all of the new shop spaces. It really, it became very clear from two components. One is we needed the space to accommodate the programming and then we needed the space to, to phase the project and construction so that we could, you know, really utilize all of it and, and make it efficient. And it's, it really became a squaring off of the school property to make that happen. And those three houses happen to be the way to square that property off.
Are we still talking about two gyms, two more gyms?
That's, in the program is two.
Why, why two?
Well.
For a seven, twelve program, you need those additional gym spaces plus, well, for, for the FIED program. And then we were talking about for the athletic programs, you need those spaces also.
How many girls, there's a difference between having a middle school in Winthrop and the high school in Fairfax? I understand that there are other factors, the social and the population, but what was the cost difference?
It was two million.
Two and a half million. Two point five million.
No more questions. No more questions.
Yeah, Chair.
Because you're just going over and over. And tell us if we, the owners of your company have a financial interest in any construction company that's not involved in the construction?
Absolutely. From my perspective, we're a construction management company, so we don't have any of our own construction crews. We don't have any affiliation or relationships.
Who owns your company?
I do.
Is hired.
Yep, and I'm one of the shareholders in mine and we're not affiliated with any construction company.
Excellent, thanks.
Chair White, please, wrap it up.
I don't know, I understand that our alternative, what's the cost of if we build a brand new, our total one school for all of the districts? For all students in one school?
What'd you say, Beth?
What the cost would be if we just had one school, one major school that's had run in nineteen one.
I think the answer to that is somewhat of a, an evolution. We had done a, an estimate at the very beginning stages of what a new PK through twelve building would be. But there, again, there wasn't land cost included in that. And that was before we had done the final programming of spaces. So what I'm saying is that the cost estimate that we came up with wasn't probably all-inclusive because the task force said very early on that the one school model would not be supported. That it really needed to be, you know, a, a school in each community. But just as a reference point, we had done the early, the early analysis of a PK two twelve building at thirty-eight thou, or thirty-eight million dollars. But again, not including land costs. And I think when we did the final programming, the square footage.
Would have gone up.
So that would have gone up to probably over forty, forty million.
I'd like to ask and answer a question asked by one student. I know, you know, no community wants to lose a student. No one in the GFW school wants to lose a student. But that's the answer. And we support three buildings in the future. Should we look at the one that we are? If you're talking forty, thirty-two million for a man who's PK through twelve building. You're saving four million, you're only two days. You know, you're still costing a lot of money because there's going to be a hell of a burden on taxpayers, on farmers. But you're saving four billion.
Well, it ends up being more of a taxpayer than on the farmers. What happens when you remove a school from a community? That, that individual city or town starts to die away. Little by little over time, you see less families.
We've seen that in the last thirty years.
Yeah. So you have less taxpayer payers paying the taxes, so the landowners that paid more.
Right, but you gotta look at being in their school, trying to keep people here. Not just the building, but actually curriculum and their tool. It's how we can keep the kids here.
If you do one school, where would that one school be? My children drive, or the bus and our, our.
Questions.
Where the consequences. Anything like that, they're hurting too. I mean, you guys think about it often.
I think from what the task force said though, is if we went to one school, you guys just said it right here, where would it be? Okay, so you've got three communities and everybody wants the school in their community. And what are you going to do then? Because if you say it's going to be in the middle district, so, or it's going to be in the middle school, so it's going to be here in the Gibbon area, let's say. Winthrop and Fairfax are probably not going to be real supportive of that. If it's over in Winthrop, I don't think Fairfax is going to be supportive of one school over in Winthrop and vice versa. So you've got that whole issue. I know one of the other things we talked about is, or had been talked about and with the task force stuff too and people I've talked with have said, you know, if you have the school over here and let's say the middle district's in Gibbon, you start losing your outlying families because they're going to go to the districts that are closer to them. So you've got more of the Winthrop families that may possibly then go over to Sibley East, Glencoe, Silver Lake, Hutch. I mean, there's a lot of things into it. It's not just, you know.
And I respond, that, I, I can provide one. Small towns, smaller than this. Our school that I graduated, or I went to before we moved to bigger town, is out in the middle of cornfield. And twelve small towns, a little bit of school. My niece and nephew all graduated from that. My niece has a nephew while graduating from that. And the other one of us know. It's workable. It's a built-up, it's work.
It's workable, but logistically it'll never pass, I mean...
There's also the component of what do you do with the three existing buildings that you have? But that's also, you know, a topic of conversation. You know, I think if you had three buyers lined up for each of your buildings right now, it would be a real straightforward discussion. But, you know, you can go across any part of the state in where they vacated a building. Most of the time, those buildings don't become of any value.
You save half a million dollars, that's what you're going to cost to not live there still. You give it away for a buck, you have a million dollars, I get it, right?
Yeah, that's one building, correct, yep.
Yeah.
But if you have three of them, you know, then kind of the, you could give them away, absolutely. I mean, that could be the case.
See, if you're all three, now you have a million bucks. You're talking forty-two million for a brand-new school, get three and a half, get the rest. You're still changing it to four or six point eight. You're forty-three and a half. You're still saving three point two, three point three million. I know, maybe you can give the house over, you know, and it's been like this for years. I mean, this school system we have is about thirty years almost, twenty-nine years ago. And it's, everybody needs to start looking at this whole eye and thirteen. That's what everybody needs to look at. You need to suck it up and face these realities of like, I'm sorry, but I help the windows. Can we support three buildings in this district in the future? That's what you six of them are sitting on.
I don't think you can because when you take a, you take a school and you remodel the school, it's the same as remodeling a home. You want to remodel a home because you can't afford to build a new one. But every time you remodel it, you make mistakes and you, and you're mad that you didn't.
I'm hoping to remodel the house, not only make it better, but it was cheaper for me to build a new house.
Right, and you don't re... You're not building a new house because your family's growing. You're building a new house because the old one's shot. And that's what's happening with these three schools, they're shot. Because they're getting there and they're going to be there in a matter of so many years. So if you want to keep your kids going to these communities, we're going to have to do something. I mean, I'm farming too, I don't want to do it just like everybody else, but it's going to have to be done. All of our ancestors did it before. That's the way it is. I mean, we're trying to do this in an economy that's tough.
For some people, it's going to be a hardship to spend all that money on county tax. So county tax exists, and that's going to be a hardship.
Yeah, it's a tough thing, but...
Forty-six million dollars, that's a lot of money for this top grade that you have. Has any business to be in?
But you can go back fifty years ago and, you know, the people that were farming back then and the people that were living in the town, when they built these schools, they said the exact same thing. I mean, it just keeps going and going and going and revolving. We don't. Nope. That's the tough, that's the tough part about living out here.
Do you think we don't have any businesses? Because word value is growing.
I think what she meant is we don't have as many businesses as we used to have.
That's right. Chair White, please. One more?
So for Fairfax itself, big enough to have one school there? And then, the other ones where the three schools, you fix them or do whatever versus one? I mean, you can keep all three of those for twenty years. How much would that cost for it to be able to be more, you mean?
So you guys, task force, if you discuss this, I think, what would it cost to build one school in Fairfax? That was one particular speaker.
We looked at, if we were to take Fairfax and convert it to PK through twelve, so utilizing the existing building and then adding on to it to accommodate all of the grade configurations. I believe that that option was the thirty-eight million. I have to go back and make a clarification. When we talked about one brand-new school in a new location, I read the wrong number. That number was option A point one. So a brand-new school in a new location was forty-six million. I don't remember who asked that question, but I misspoke. I was reading this option here where if we utilized the existing Fairfax building, remodeled it and added on for PK through twelve, that was thirty-eight million.
We didn't look at operating costs at this time.
The other terms is all fixing and maintenance, projected maintenance costs?
Well, you know, just taking what we have in the three buildings and fixing up or doing the maintenance in just the three buildings, that was the sixteen to seventeen million. Not changing the grade configuration.
And that's going to last so long?
Well, you know, that becomes more of a five to ten-year option.
Five to ten-year fixing, you're going to spend another five, ten years.
Yeah.
Where you built a new one and you got eighty years of it. And you're going to maintain them all the way through.
Yeah, and that was really a lot of the task force conversation is that they didn't want to propose a project that you have to come back with within a ten or twenty-year timeline and say, here, we have to do this again. And so that was one avenue. The other avenue was they didn't feel that it was appropriate to consolidate to one school district, even though that probably is the best long-term and most efficient solution because of the importance of the three communities. So, you know, those were kind of the opposite ends of the direction and then we worked our way into the different options. Of course, there was one other option, and that was to do nothing. And we, actually, we started with that, what happens if you do nothing? And of course, we don't know the answer to that, but there's a, is an example not too far away in Brownton, what happened when they did nothing?
Well, I'd like to just thank everyone for attending tonight and for all your good questions and comments. And just, this is, you know, we don't take anything lightly, but certainly a thing of this magnitude, the board is not just taking anything lightly here. We appreciate all your input and please keep it coming. Anything else? I guess we're not in your meetings, there's no agenda for any of this.